Additional to the agenda, item number 8A in the consent. An additional mud block application for design denied. We have one removal from the agenda, item number 25, Commissioner Page has been asked to be removed. The agenda is, is there additions?
Uh, it was 27, 31, consent.
Twenty-seven which one?
Thirty-one.
Move to the board? Move twenty-seven and thirty-one to consent. How is number thirty-three? Does that work? How about number four-eight? Any additions or deletions? Number thirty-three, any update on Green Street paving? Okay, anything else?
Chairman, I move to adopt the rule of passage.
With the motion by Commissioner Page to adopt the agenda amendment, seconded by Commissioner Patterson, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve minutes from July seventeen, special meeting, August thirty. Motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Patterson. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Item four-eight, Mr. Jack Brown. I had a need to fill the disclosure with any results of the board. Anything else? Moving on, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Page, anybody by Commissioner Page, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign, motion carries. Comments in service of the public running into the item, I'm going to give you a heads up, I may be stopping from time to time to take care of the public here, so if we give you a heads up at the time. That being said, comments in service of the public running into the item. Seeing nothing, yeah.
Good thinking, quick to walk up or do you stay long on that?
Go from there.
I would like y'all to reconsider the moving the board meeting to someplace that happens tonight. We're not going to float into the hallway too much, but I know in the courthouse, the courtroom is nothing else. And it does get packed at weird times, and it's full tonight, but it's, it's full.
And I know we're also looking at the courtroom, Buddy and the staff's working on that, so hopefully we'll be able to address that pretty quick. Number eleven, the board received an update from the Steen Hatchie Water Association, referred by the board of September seventh. I saw them, but where, there you are.
I am here.
I'm giving the same caveat as earlier, I may stop you in a few seconds, so I apologize, but go ahead.
I apologize for not being at the last county commissioner meeting that you held. I was actually at the Dixie County Commissioner meeting that evening, it was the same, or that day, it was the same time. We, we did sign the agreement between Dixie County and Steen Hatchie, so we are prepared to provide wastewater services to Gina. And we've got that agreement in place, and we're moving forward with that. The, the plan at this time is we're, we're moving forward with trying to create a GUA, if you will. Now, we've, we've recently hired an attorney out of Tallahassee, Mr. Michael Stillman, that represents a firm that used to represent the city of Tallahassee. And what we passed him with doing is giving us a list of governance options, so we can look at what our options are as far as the GUA, as far as some other government entity that will allow us to get the funding for these projects. And, and make it a regional utility and everything that we had talked about before. So that is still moving forward. We also have hired Tammy Ray of Haskell Engineering for administrative services. She since then hired Danny Collins, who was Governor Boyd's assistant, and put him on her staff to go after legislative and congressional appropriations for our projects. So all that's moving forward. We have a meeting tomorrow with Swanee River Water Management to go after some other funding for some of these projects through Swanee River Water Management and look at the availability of property for water plants and such. And that meeting's scheduled for tomorrow. We're going to present another option to Dixie County on Thursday at their county commissioner meeting, and that's basically, we're, we're going to seek some appropriations and some funding under the Dixie County umbrella for the water plant we're going to put in Dixie County. Now, all of these things that we're putting together are moving toward this GUA at the same time. Part of the agreement with Dixie County added the Dixie County Commissioner for Gina to our order board. We've amended our bylaws, and that amendment is up before the membership on the third of October at our annual meeting. And what we've done to our bylaws, and I spoke with Mr. Bethay earlier, is we added also the Taylor County Commissioner for Steen Hatchie to our board, those, those two positions. So our board will go from being a seven-member board to being a nine-member board with representation from both Dixie and Taylor Counties on it. You know, to, in order to, to basically give equal representation to both counties and to have county commissioner involvement in our process. So that we're not operating outside of your knowledge, basically. Because where we're headed is basically a regional utility that you will own. You know, the, the counties will own, in addition to us. I mean, we're, we're not going to be out there by ourselves. It's, it's going to be governed by the counties and by us. And I, I talked to Mr. Bethay about it, and, because I wanted him to know before this meeting that that was being thrown at him. Also, with adding the county commissioners, we're giving the option of the county commissioners or their appointee. And basically, we, we gave them that option so that we weren't throwing them to the wolves. And we understand their time is valuable, and they don't have time always to come to all our meetings and participate in everything, but they can appoint a representative to that position. And, and that would be an option. Well, we don't, we don't. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We're not appointing him to our board. What we're doing is, we're, we're, we're making that position available to him. If, if he doesn't wish to fill that position, or this board doesn't wish to fill that position, that's totally at your option. Right, right, and-
All right, they're authorities, they're all voters.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah. Right, right. And, and what we, what we're looking for is, we're looking for your participation in, in this process. We don't want to be out there doing something that, that you would disapprove of. I mean, that's, that's not what we want. And, and by the same token, Dixie County, we wouldn't want to do something that they don't, that they disapprove of. So, this whole process is, is still moving forward, we're still working on it.
One of the things that I would ask is, is we look forward that bylaws and bigger pieces of stuff are all coming through our new attorneys. You know, if we start, we might make sure that our liability is, is handled now and then.
Right now, we don't have any liability, but, but if we go to the GUA, it would be like being a key. And they would have a lot of ability to come.
Has, has, even on the answer to this question, has the GUA that I prepared been presented to the board technically?
Yes, it has. As, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting talking about our, the, the agreement we just signed. And I actually brought it up, I brought it to the meeting and said, you know, you have copies of this, this is the direction that we would like to go, and- They had seen it, and, you know, they, they had it. I, I, I don't know what their complete reaction to it is, or what have you. And I'll tell you, what we're doing with forming this GUA is, to a large extent, plagiarizing that document. And, and, you know, because it's already created, it's already there, and it's, and, and as I, I told Dixie County, I, I presented it to them, and we talked about it, and I told them that this is a good document. This is a good plan. And, 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 and I've since then taken that same document, giving it to our new attorney that's going to give us these governance options, and giving it to our administrative services people. And they're going to take it and put this all together, and we're going to try and pull the two counties together and, and make this happen.
Any questions, the board?
I think it's all good. Last thing we had, we had a developer here from Ideal Fish Camp. I was a little bit disappointed in your organization from the perspective of sewer. I'd like to know and understand more about that, and why you guys are not stepping forward and-
Your last meeting was, what was the date of that last meeting? The seventh.
Thursday. No, that was the last week in August, but it wasn't the last week.
That was the seventh. That was the day meeting. When was the day meeting? Yeah, day meeting.
The Thursday morning meeting.
Okay, that was, well, I should have asked what month that was in. Because, and I have right here in front of me the application from Ideal Fish Camp that's dated June twenty-ninth, oh-six. Ideal Fish Camp came to us and, and filled out this application of Mr. Gregory Preble and of Mr. Steve Bucci, I do believe. So they were fully aware and, and basically already on board with sewer. We, we had already had the discussions, we had already talked about putting sewer to their project. After your last meeting, there was a, one of our board members was at that meeting, and he immediately called me, and I immediately called them, because he said they were there and they didn't know anything about us. And I called them and said, you were there and didn't know anything about us, and I have your paperwork right here in front of me. And, and they, you know, apologized and explained that, you know, they knew they were on board, they knew what was going on. The next day, they came to my office, and basically we drafted contracts to deliver service to their development. I wasn't at that meeting, I don't know what transpired in this room, I don't know, you know, what they were saying, but I was a little upset when I got a call from one of our board members that someone was before this board telling you that they hadn't heard of us, and I had already drafted contracts for them.
Actually, he didn't say they hadn't heard of, I think it was a matter of, it was a matter of, it didn't make the timeline.
This is conflicting information.
Well, here's their-
It wasn't developed without us.
On, on this document is, their completion date is six-oh-seven. And we meet that timeline by five months, you know, I mean, we, we have no problem meeting that timeline, and we explained that to them in the meeting with them when they filled this document out. I mean, it-
Let me stop you just for a second. Item number seventeen, the board received a post for construction project, far side improvements, today six-ten. We did not hold that public hearing, we received no bids for that. Item number eighteen, the board received bids for Taylor County bird rack platform. I just think it took a second to stay there. Platform construction project, reconstruction projects after this date at six-fifteen P.M. A bid committed Clay Olson, Justin Sapp, and Brianne Hoover. Clay's going to come forward and open for us. Daniel, I'll have to do, he's going to come over and do it, so we can keep on with you.
Okay. So as, as far as, as our process, what, what we've been doing, and to kind of bring you up to speed on the process of us contacting these developers or them contacting us, normally what happens, they come to us for water. They have to come to us, or they don't get water. When they come to us for water, we discuss sewer. And, and how to meet the needs of their project. We have them fill this form out that basically gives us who's your engineer, so we have a contact to get site plans, so that we have timelines on their project, so we understand where their project is. And then we move into basically the contractual portion of it. And sometimes that may take months, and sometimes that may take days. And, and it's basically to meet their timeline. When they have a timeline that's out, they're not, they, they don't have site plans, for instance, but they're planning a project, it may be six months before they're back in my office again. But I've got this document that says we've talked to them. And then when they come back in my office, ready to come before your board for their site plan or what have you, then we come up with contracts and that sort of thing, and we move through this process. One of the things after that meeting that, that we did at the recommendation of our board member is we contacted your building department, we set up a meeting for tomorrow afternoon, because we, we need to better document what we're doing and what their requirements are. So we can, we can figure out what do they need, and what do we need to provide them for these projects.
Are you talking about the tech meeting tomorrow?
What, three o'clock in the afternoon? Yeah, I, I couldn't be there because I have that Swanee River Water Management meeting, and I was told that three o'clock was fine, that would be going on.
Should be a little-
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Well, I just haven't, I, to me, I was a concern, I have a developer up here telling you, one thing, I hear different things, you've got application. I do want to watch that, because good developers go forward, we need to have sewer. And some of these developments, I'm not sure what happened there, but-
Yeah, and I-
I hope you guys continue to sound like y'all did your work. I'm concerned about the developer, I'll write down, ask them, let them-
Right, and, and that's sort of what I'm looking for tomorrow from this other meeting.
Right, that's what coordinating is.
Is coordinating this, this communication so that we know what, what you need, what you need to have in front of you when somebody approaches you and says, we've never heard of Steen Hatchie Water Association. And you can go, well, apparently you have. Right, here's your, your application to Steen Hatchie Water Association.
I don't think you said that, you didn't know. No, I was trying to say, no, you-
What?
Now, when did the application you're talking about, when did that application go forth?
It was June twenty-ninth, is when they-
That's the official application they applied for you to-
For, for us to provide water and sewer to their project, is, is when they came to us and said, we'd like water and sewer. And, and we sat down with them, and we looked at their site plans at that point, and we looked at the availability. Because depending on where these projects are, we may not be able to meet their timeline. I mean, that's, that's a realistic expectation. You know, in the future, if there may be a development that's fifteen miles north of where we're putting in pipeline, and we can't meet their requirements without a huge amount of funding to run a pipeline to them. And, and we have to look at those options. So every one of them, we evaluate individually. This one in particular, the pipeline, is already running right in front of their property, you know, and through part of their property. So it's, it's no issue as far as, as putting this development online.
Okay, appreciate all the effort today.
Thank you.
I think I heard what I wanted to hear, is that, so, if you's going to be asking those questions on Steen Hatchie Water?
Well, we're going to, toward the next, how we're going to provide information to the public on who they need to contact about using sewer or getting second bank, probably including health or dental issues, so the public can receive the best information, that's our whole concern.
Do I have a question?
Yes, sir, a Steen Hatchie resident wrote a handwritten letter to inquire about the hurricane vulnerability of new things going on with water, sewage in Steen Hatchie and Gina. And I didn't know where to refer him or who to find out about, would you all be the ones to solicit? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. We have two bids for the bird racks, the first one being for eighty thousand dollars from Maryland Marine Construction Incorporated. The second one being fifty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-five. And it's from Shippers Marine, what's that? Shippers Marine, that's what they're doing. Shippers Marine Construction Incorporated. Buddy, the board's office has booked the bids. Time being six-twenty or shortly thereafter, the board to hold the first, the two public hearings sent for this date at six-twenty P.M. Concerning Amendment LDC oh-six dash one, removing the fifteen acre exemption on private roads. And if you send the first reading and the proposed ordinance, stopping said amendment, I'll ask for a motion to read by title. Motion by Commissioner Bethay.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Page, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign, Tom may go for it.
In accordance to Taylor County Florida, I'm meaning the Taylor County Land Development Code is amended, meaning section forty-two dash one forty-seven, entitled Designation of Plans as Major or Minor Developments. Exempting the division of land into two or more parcels of fifteen acres or greater, as long as each parcel has at least sixty feet of frontage on an existing county maintained road, and exempting the division of land into two or more parcels of forty acres or greater, as long as each parcel has sixty feet of frontage on an existing private easement or road servicing not more than twenty-four parcels, providing severability, repealing all sixteen conflict and providing eventually data.
Anyone in the public wish to address the amendment?
Can you just say what that means in English? I, I appreciate that, but just, what is it actually technically due to the road?
I think a good answer would be forty-two, one forty-seven, or subpar, paragraph eight.
You want to read it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Designation of plans as major or minor developments. Generally, for purposes of this subdivision, all development plans shall be designated by the planning directors either minor or major developments, except in this section. Except notwithstanding this subsection and subsection B of this section, any division of land, this is where you need to listen, okay? Any division of land into two or more parcels of fifteen acres or greater. Everybody got that? Each of which has at least sixty feet of frontage on an existing county maintained road, and any division of land into two or more parcels of forty acres or greater, each of which has at least sixty feet of frontage on an existing private easement or private roadway servicing not more than twenty-four acres is exempt from this subdivision. So that's, that's, that's what it's changing.
Danny, do you not put that label charge or that's what you're doing?
Presently, the Land Development Code allows property to be divided into parcels fifteen acres or larger if they run on an existing accessway, which may be a private easement or just a strip where people have been driving that appears to be a road and, you know, ownership has not changed. This would change that so that the fifteen acre parcels would have front on a county maintained road, but that's the main issue.
Your question, Jack, I would suggest you, since you asked me that, that's why you have two hearings on this. So ask Danny, and then he could, he, I'm not the author of this, this is the law, central part of original planning council.
Danny, where it says, um, section forty-two, dash one forty-seven, page nine, so, each of which has at least sixty feet of frontage on an existing county maintained road, and any division of land into two or more parcels of forty acres, that'd be four? Excuse me? Are both of those required? To me, it's, it's saying that you gotta have sixty foot frontage on an existing county road for fifteen acres, and any division of land into two or more parcels of forty acres, each of which has at least an existing, uh, sixty feet of frontage on an existing private easement.
And is the right word.
And that's servicing not more than twenty-four parcels? Is twenty-four parcels also an addition?
Yes.
Explain more clearly than twenty-four parcels, you lost me on the next part.
Well, when you, when you reach the threshold of forty acre parcels that are divided off of a private roadway or easement, the maximum that can be done is twenty-four parcels.
Twenty-four forty acre parcels.
Right, and, now, side note, I'm technically not the author of this either. But that would, the maximum that you could do that before you would have to, the road improvement would be twenty-four parcels.
You all the county roads have sixty foot of right away right now?
No.
Now, the fifteen acre parcels would be sixty foot on a public, uh, that'd be a flag lock. That would be a flag lock, most of them would be sixty feet.
So, my question is, is let's say they're on a, a bloody, a county road where they have right of way on county roads, but we don't have sixty foot.
Well, it's requiring sixty foot of frontage, not a sixty foot of right of way.
Okay, so it's only sixty foot of frontage, not sixty foot of right of way.
Right.
And we got, because, and I have some questions asked earlier, was how much right of way are required?
Now, this would not require a specific right of way width if it's a county maintained road.
Hey, what if it's a private road? I mean, it's not written here, but what are we saying, it's got to be the right of way width or a couple of-
The policy we've used in the past, and that's what I foresee as being used on the forty acre parcels, is that we do a site visit, and if it looks like a road, and you can drive down it like a road, and we all agree that it, a road, and then we consider it a road, we don't, you know, look at the width. Most of the time, you don't have a right of way there anyway.
Right, because, you know, what we're getting into is, we're not going to talk about some of that, requiring the public to be more than accountable.
Anyone else in the public? Dale?
My name is Dale Rowell. I would like to save myself some time and y'all too. All these ordinance tonight that's on the agenda, I have some problems with, except for the two on the signs and the tire line right of ways. Our LDRs is, and I've used this part often, is like, is like our bible in development. I don't mean to be that sacrilegious in saying that, but it is a book, and, and you've got one section here that affects something, and you change this, and you change the meaning somewhere else. One of the major concerns I have in all these three that we're talking about now on the fifteen acre flag lock, and the reason why I mention all three, I'm not going to get back up here, I hope that you remember, I'm going to talk about these other ones, that I don't get back up and stutter, still around. But on all three- But on all three of them, there, in our L D R comprehensive plan, there is an exemption for family division of property. That relates only to divisions, to, only to density. You have to meet all the other requirements of the L D Rs. If I want to give my daughter a one acre in Shader Grove, which I can't give none of y'all, we decide that doesn't happen, but if I want to give them a one acre requirement, a lot up there, we still got to meet all the other requirements. Uh, one of the things that y'all need to be considering tonight is the fact, the effect that it has on economic value. I know that urban sprawl is a bad word, but then again, when you look at what urban sprawl is in development, there's not too much difference. That urban sprawl to me is uncontrolled development where development is good. If we want to do things like this, tighten up development, one thing you're doing, you're taking away the ability of me, I own eighty-five acres, okay? And I have a private road that goes into it that you can't drive down, nothing to say about you. Everybody's invited. But before you change this, I can go in there and break this up, and if I want to sell my land, I'm gonna have to go in there and pave that road because of this. I actually have a seventy foot right of way gun in the mind, but based upon this, you're affecting the value of my land. If we don't have development, what we're gonna end up is, we all gonna be in apartments and townhouses. We keep looking at South Florida. We don't want to be like Miami-Dade County where everybody lives, run on top of each other. And when you, when you do this, when you pass this, approve this, uh, these requirements, you're going to restrict anybody that owns any property, the ability to go in and subdivide it, break it up into, if, if somebody want to sell fifteen acres this year, fifteen, you know, it's kind of like a retirement fund, and that's what it is, for most people's retirement. You're gonna prevent them to do it. So what's gonna happen is somebody's gonna come in and buy your property at a wholesale price, develop it and get a big price out of it, you know? And as, as property goes on and it's subdivided more and more, there are other requirements of our existing rules that would require payment and building a road. So, you know, if you get in there, if you get outside the fifteen acre exemption, and it's on, if, if we don't have an existing road, or, uh, he's not going to, you can't do it nobody. If you build a road, you're gonna have to build a road, you're gonna have to go through Sonny River, you're gonna have to get ERP, you're gonna have higher survey area, yeah, that's good, I like that. But anyway, it's, it's not good for the public. It's not good for economical value. Uh, we have a different opinion on what good development is and what's bad. Inconceivable river preserves has been viewed by this board as a bad example of what, what's going on. Their process included coming to the tech review committee, meeting with the tech review committee, taking the county manager, county engineer, and county road department manager out to look at it, and they say, yeah, this looks like a road, and you're meeting the requirements. The only thing that, and then they took it for, we took it for the plan and zoning board, and they say, yeah, you're meeting all of our requirements. The only thing that I see is that they didn't do is get an ERP permit from Sonny River Water Management District, and they're working on correcting that today. A similar, a project very similar to that, what I call the Yellow Jacket Project, project is out on county line, Yellow Jacket area up in there. We brought that up in the tracks and, and took it for the district, water management district, they didn't have a problem with it, we didn't have to do nothing. And so, you know, you, you look, I did this yesterday, and I can do this today, and I can do the same thing today. And that's, it's basically what happened with the Inconceivable River preserves. I think some of the things that we could do to prevent that in the future, I'll find my notes, because I don't have a real good memory. Uh, we, we, we talked about, a few times before the board, and, Mr. Connor, you don't like a disclosure statement being required, I understand that, you know, I mean, but then again, everybody that buys a piece of property shouldn't know what they're buying. They shouldn't know if it's a county road or whatever, and if I do a disclosure statement, I come, this road is maintained by this homeowner's association, or this road is maintained by the county with MSBU tax attached to it, I think we should do that. This is in a flood zone, you know? I like the idea that the district has, now the district is giving to y'all a computer that you can go online and look, see if it's in wetlands or anything out there. You ain't seen one? Well, they said they were gonna do it. But anyway, I think that's a good idea, that when they go into the building and painting department, you can look and see where you're getting into. And that's a good checkpoint on new development, these fifteen acres. No, you can't build in a wetlands. We don't want to build in, don't want nobody to build into a wetlands. In a flood plain, we want to make sure that they're high enough above the flood plain that they're not flooded. Um, some of these pieces of property are twenty miles from an existing power line. Somebody's got to pay for that power to get put in there. They need to know that you're gonna have to pay three thousand dollars a mile, or whatever what the cost is to get power under your house, and you're gonna have to pay, you know, a large bill each month to pay for that. And that's where the disclosure statement would, would help force. Uh, another, uh, a clause, and every homeowner's association or property owner's association should be that if the entity fails, then the county has the right to impose an MSBU tax on the property, with only a public hearing and notification of the owners. And so, a lot of times, property owner's association just don't do what they're supposed to do. And y'all's hands are tied, and I believe it's Yates Creek where we had the problem with the road, several of them. But anyway, but anyway, if, if we didn't require that on all homeowner's associations, and basically what I may ask you to do is, let's go approve these tonight, let's go back to the drawing board, hold some workshops, and I got a lot of input, this is just some of it that I'd like to bring in, but I won't type it here, and I could sit here and talk to you a long time. But, uh, and I'm not gonna speak on the other one, but the other three, the, uh, flag locks and the road issue is all related to these same issues, items, issues. Any questions for me?
Just for clarification, I'm not against disclosure, against more government regulation.
Oh, I understand exactly, and so.
My face is cringe when you said that, I'm gonna make sure they understand, I'm not against.
Well, I, I understand your hesitance to impose new regulation, but that's what we're doing tonight, and if you're doing tonight, you're tightening up the strings, you know, you're trying to prevent urban sprawl, and I understand that, I understand it. And good development does not necessarily mean that you're not gonna.
I just want to clarify, I'm not against, I think everybody should disclose.
I, I, I know that exactly, I know exactly where you stand. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope you'll consider what I asked.
Meg?
My name is Meg Fleming, I live in Steen Hatchie. Um, first of all, I happen to agree with Mr. Rowell that, I think that all of these clauses that we currently have that have been continually modified through the years probably need to be looked at in whole, so that each clause is in conjunction and working properly with all others. As a contract writer, I would do that myself, I can't imagine that I would allow a contract change to occur without a full, um, review. So I do agree that that needs to be done. However, unlike Mr. Rowell, I disagree that the property values would be decreased if they're required to put in infrastructure to support this type of, uh, division of property. And the reason I think that is because, obviously, if you have a piece of property that has full access for fire, power, sewer, water, emergency medical services versus a hopefully maintained, no offense to the county, but they're not always done, maintained road that is typically, at least in Steen Hatchie a number of times, covered with large boulders or have grass on them, or just, or potholes, it just makes it that much more difficult to take care of, the people that are gonna move there. My biggest concern about this is that as a taxpayer, I listened for the last thirty-eight days, all of you in conjunction at different meetings, talk about the fact that we don't have enough money for the infrastructure. If we possibly allow people now to go down this route without requiring them to put in the infrastructure, then I have to pay for it fifteen years down the road when they continue to sell that property, and you put the roads in. I'm the one that has to pay, everybody has to pay here, but they've already reaped the benefit of this. And so I have a problem with any development getting done without the full infrastructure being put in. That's what I feel about that.
Councilor Howard, are you standing rising to your purchase?
Yes, sir. How are y'all doing? Man. That's good, Mr. Conrad. My name's Trey Howard, I'm here for two reasons tonight. First reason is selfish. Uh, hopefully, one day when my father passes on, he will leave me some land. No, 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 no. I don't want him to pass on, but hopefully when he does, when he does.
Trey Howard, brother. T R E Y.
I'm the only child of an only child, so maybe I'll get what little bit of land they accumulate. How's that? Is that better?
That sounds better.
I'm sorry. I do not want my father to pass away. He, he, we're trying to build a house, and he's my only savior in the house. Building a house, a pregnant wife, and starting a new job, if that don't make you drink, I don't know what will.
So for clarification, you want to wait after the house is built, you're trying to say?
Right, right, right. But the first thing is, I'm being stingy, and I do also represent several developers that.
Are those you too?
All developers are stingy. But, uh, this will affect them as well, so I'm here for two reasons tonight. First off, I understand, when I looked at what was sent to planning and zoning board for these, that this was done in an effort to maintain roads and create infrastructure. Um, I truthfully believe that there are less restrictive means, as Darryl pointed out a while ago, to carry out these. Mr. Dale came up with some good ideas, and I think there are a lot of other people in the county that could come up with good ideas. I do think we need a way to maintain these roads. Mr. Bethel has stated that, or, excuse me, that homeowner's associations don't work. Homeowner's associations in the past haven't worked here, but that doesn't mean that we can't work with the county attorney, people in the community, to make a homeowner's association that has some teeth to it. They are out there. Actually, the one that, uh, I tear did up in north in the county, has some pretty big teeth in it, has a way of collecting the fees, I don't know if you've seen it, Mr. Conrad, but it's, it, there's money in there to collect if somebody doesn't pay, which I don't think was in the ones that you saw earlier. There are ways, other ways to collect money to maintain roads than imposing this. Um, you're looking at, at fifteen acres is what we got now in this exemption on existing road. Basically, in my mind, Danny, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna bump it up to forty, but only twenty-four units, which, you know, there, there's a magic number in there, I don't know what that is, but to me, it's already fifteen, that's worked in the past, that's a pretty big chunk of land, it's not to some of us in this room, but to a fellow that's lived in St. Pete all his life on a quarter acre, fifteen acres is a big place. And he doesn't want to move up here to a paved road. He does however want to move up here to a nice road. He wants to move up here where he can come and go, two-wheel drive traffic, ambulance can get to his house, fire truck can get to his house, and I believe there is a less restrictive means other than this exemption, or, excuse me, than this amendment tonight. And I would ask respectfully that y'all both know on this amendment, and that we do have a workshop, a public workshop to create something else. Thank y'all for your time.
Anyone else?
You want slam? Go ahead.
I think you have the bus.
One, one last. I'm getting questions from everybody else, but as long as you're not the wife, you can ask all the questions you want.
What you're left.
Well, Mr. Dale pointed out a couple. He pointed out homeowner's association with a backup MSBU. It may be it's an MSBU. I just, I don't have the solution right now, but I think it requires us to sit down, when I say us, I mean, the community as a whole, with the commissioners, in a public workshop, and come up with a less restrictive means. I'm sorry.
We, um, I don't have any problem. I don't start to sell fifteen acres, but I don't have any problem with that. Not having to have a paper, I don't have any problem with that. But when you start building houses, and, you know, people, when they build a house, they're expecting fire department to show up.
Yes, sir.
They're expecting the ambulance to show up.
Excuse me. And I, I know that beyond reasonable.
I, I believe in property rights and stuff, and, you know, we ought to be able to divide your land, I know that this is a private place and that, but at the same time, you know, what we're looking for is how are we sure that you get, you know, a homeowner's association that best wishes when the state of Florida has recognized that homeowner's associations don't work, that there are major, major problems with homeowner's associations.
And that's a very valid point, there have been in the past.
You know, so, I mean, we'll talk to, you know, we had a public hearing on this, we had workshop, and, and we had a lot of discussion, and I agree, maybe this is not the best option. One of the things we did talk about is like, you know, down south at, you know, where the gas went about fifteen acre block or something, a private road, and there's an agreement that you're not gonna give them services, and that you're not gonna build on us, and be a trailer sign, and a landing trailer, or something like that, and you're gonna have some pipe sewers for it. But, uh, what we have to look at is, we're gonna be expected to provide those services, and how do you do that without being a burden on the rest of taxpayers and communities?
And I agree with you, I'm, I'm, I don't mean to interrupt you. We've talked before, and, and I think an MSBU is a wonderful thing. Some people, some of the folks I work for don't think it's a wonderful thing, but I've, in my heart of hearts, I believe that is a way, you know the money gets collected, you know the money's there, there's a hundred percent private MSBUs available for a private road. Um, and Mr. Conrad making, he shared some more light on that portion.
If there is, you know, but all that into the capture, we start on the property.
Yes, sir, and I, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, but if, if we, if y'all enact this tonight, then it's gonna jump me up to forty acres at my house, and, and that's, and that's y'all's option. I just would request that we, we do, if, if it takes setting up an MSBU for the private roads, then, you know, to me, it's about compromise. You know, you want a way, y'all want a way to take care of these roads, and I understand that for you. I don't want my granddaddy to have to pay for somebody else. You know, I, I want him to pay for his road and his part of the taxes, but I don't want him coming up here and having to pay his part of the taxes to build a road for some fellow coming up here buying a bunch of land. And, and I agree with Mr. Bethel on that, but by the same token, I also don't want this to be taken away from him. I mean, he would never sell, but if he did, this is a less restrictive option for him, if that's what he wants to do. And I just hate to see that bumped up to forty acres, just because we want to get services, I'm sorry, Mr. Bethel.
So your proposal, we leave it at fifteen acres?
Yes, sir.
And that you can divide land into fifteen acre tracts, but on private roads, that you're wanting the private road to be, for an MSBU to be set up, take care of these private roads, rather than what, what's described here?
I would prefer that rather than the language we have here, yes, sir.
So how would y'all, how would you feel about that?
Well, existing rules say if it's on existing roads or easements, then, then you exempt, you know? Okay, once you get out of where you have the existing roads or easements, then with other rules, you've got to build a road on everything in there, you're gonna get under the Sonny River Water Management District rules that says that you've got to have ERP, someone has to maintain those roads, so either you're gonna have to go through the MSBU process, you know, somebody's got to maintain that road, and if we're gonna bring that road to a county, it helps, right? You know, the county's not going to accept no roads, I guarantee you, without an MSBU on it, it's already due to county specifications.
I, I think the problem here is, if you don't pass this, then you don't have the option, because the rules say that if you have existing roads there, they don't have to come to us, they don't have to do anything. And so what we're doing is now setting up some methodology, so developers have to come, they have to come and look at our standards, but right now, just, all they have to right now is come to tech review, and plan board, say, yep, you're doing fifteen acre blocks, and there's, there're logging roads out there, so you don't have to come, and so you don't have to do anything, and so they're above that. In my research, I had some counties in the state of Minnesota, Gulf County totally good out, uh, Crystal River, uh, they looked at me and said, and I forget what county Crystal River is, Sippin's, Sippin's, they looked at me and, and she said, why are you even thinking that way? And, uh, basically, I'll just tell you a quick story of this admission, though I have to tell you real well, um, she.
She, we discussed it two, about two hours, and the way she became commissioner was through this process. It's basically, she came, involved, and homeowners associations, no roads, no nothing, and the lady that she was having to help her neighbor try to save her, she was having to take her tour. And so if you want, just to be honest, I have this in my district already, you know, neighbor pointing at those people won't pay their dues. And so we just set up a lot of dynamics, a lot of things, and I think this is one of those areas we've had in our plans. We never foresaw what kind of development we're seeing today, and we've got to have some way to manage this development, because if we don't do the infrastructure in today, fifteen years from now, whenever you have a fifteen acre parcel, some divided, you know, if Bethel moved there, and they have four kids, and then, you know, according to our rules, the family rules, they can subdivide that, and now you've got, you know, a number of homes on fifteen acres and no roads to support that. So I think that's, that's a key issue, and that's a burden we all want to put, and that's not good at all.
I just want to comment, I'm not against changing the rules. Okay, but I feel like, and you said we had a public workshop on this, we had a non-changing, we discussed it in county official meetings, and I don't think we had a appetite to have a public hearing on it.
That was, we were here that afternoon.
Well, I know we was here for them, but I didn't, anyway, you know, there are some other rule changes in here at least in that, and what I'd like to say is that, postpone it, so we can have a workshop of other changes in this evening. You talk about the family extension, I think that's a constitutional right that I could give to you.
This doesn't affect families?
This doesn't affect families?
You say it does, it does.
It does.
How?
It, I want your family, you can put it to you from the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, I, I read the notes, and I still can't figure out how it does.
All right.
And the status doesn't say it is?
I'm gonna have to look it up.
While you're looking it up?
Basically, what it says is...
I'm gonna have to look it up, I'm gonna have to look it up.
The family extension is for density requirements only, just it has to meet all the other requirements.
I don't want to have to speak to that also. Trey, you may sit down.
And I think I'm just gonna summarize for the board what I read in both the comprehensive plan and the land development code. The comprehensive plan contains mandatory language that requires a building permit be eligible for property conveyed between family members. That's in the comprehensive plan. It treats such transfers as non-conforming parcels that shall continue to be eligible for the issuance of residential building permit, subject to setback and concurrency. Land Development Code specifically exempts division of land among family members from submittal and recordation requirements for lot splits. The definition of minor development within the Land Development Code, in my opinion, is incapable of superseding the authority of the provisions of the comprehensive plan. In short, division of property among family members does not meet the definition of development requiring platting.
Okay, now, important Meg asks, because I want to ask instead, translate that so everybody understands it pretty.
Well, the comp plan says that family members can divide property, and they will be eligible for a building permit. The Land Development Code can't supersede that.
That's exactly right. L D C O cannot supersede that.
Hang on one minute, Mr. Green. Thank you. Mr. Brown, six and a...
In, in every one of our land use districts, it has this language, and where it gives what you fancy it can be.
Where you at, Dale?
I'm in section forty-two, three-eight-two, and it's in all subsections. And it's, it's also listed in, I got another representative to you also, and it's in all district specifications. An accurate citizen, not to see more unit for ten acres, you make a trial and error. This transfer of property to members of the principal owners immediately family is liable without regard to the density limitation, provided that all of the other required requirements are there to develop. So if you're going to require me to give them a sixty-foot access out to our own family road.
Six foot frontage?
Yeah, I, I understand, but if it's a sixty-foot frontage, then it's a sixty-foot access to the property. And here's where we talk about all three of the proposed changes that I have a concern with, and I am not trying to settle. We need them, we do need to review the orders, but I feel like in this present written stage, we can do a better job. And if this isn't example of what the Lord Florida Regional Plan Council can give to us, then I recommend that y'all not be in contract for now, because I call the Lord Florida.
Now, they did not create this language.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was said.
The Plan Council did not create this language.
Okay, I still have a problem.
Someone's agreeing with you on that statement, so go ahead.
Okay, and then in our, I think, the one thing we keep changing things, and we don't say where we're coming from, in our comprehensive plan, and I appreciate the board allowing me to serve on the planning and zoning board about ten years. I had selfish reasons, but I wanted to understand these rules and regulations of effect in my business, okay? I think I'm a better surveyor in the fact that I can go to the Bible and Daniel, verse and chapter, and need to look at. And look on side part there, in our contracts that we do with the developers, we tell them that they have to comply with all the rules, but we're not interested in working for. It's written throughout, standard format language that we do, and we take it upfront, you guys make these requirements, but we're not interested in working for you. But in policy, I think it's I eight dot six, it says a parcel land to base between family members of lingered defense for purpose of providing grantee in the transaction of personal residential building lot shall be eligible for issue, issuance of a residential building permit, even though the parcel to base is non-conforming as the size and the conformance conveyed takes place after the date of adoption with comprehensive plan.
Isn't that just what Danny read?
It is, it is, but you said that the comprehensive plan...
You read the comprehensive plan, I don't think.
Well, I'm not, but I, but I read, wasn't reading it, I was in the land development regulation. And I'm, I'm just saying combined, and, but I keep finding, we have to...
What I'm saying is, if they come in conflict, the comprehensive plan doesn't.
I, I understand, I'm just saying that it didn't.
You're saying that it doesn't?
I'm saying that it does.
It doesn't conflict, or that the, the, the comprehensive plan does not supersede, supersede, supersede?
I can, my, my, my point is, is that this exemption only covers the density requirements. All the other requirements you have to meet, including setback or anything.
Setback and concurrency, that platting is a wholly different issue that's not addressed by the comp plan. And say, only in my opinion, the comp plan clearly supersedes the land development code, in my opinion, in that, and that property divided by family members are eligible for a building permit, period.
I, I, I understand that, and, and, and Mr. Brown is very lawful and helpful person. But you want to make sure that these rules are written so that they can be lived by when Mr. Brown is gone. We had a different person in the planning and zoning department at one time that required every family that wanted to do this to come before the planning and zoning board. We had one lady who talked about, about, that had a planning and zoning board meeting, and what she got, it was over party here, because it was covered by a green, it couldn't be.
So you're saying that the sixty-foot frontage does not comply?
Family member division of property has never, there's never been a plat submitted or recorded. There's been something before the board that had property that went on to buy less than one acre or where there were questions, and I can't speak to what came and where the board followed directly in law. But if they don't require platting, then they're not going to be subject to road hits or...
Why don't you put a statement about a fact in this?
The only thing I'm saying is that, that the land use change amendment, the language that the minimum size needs to be revisited, I'm, I'm not against...
Do you have a right to change the language?
I, I know, I, I, I'm, I'm, as long as Mr. Brown is in the building and planning department over there, I feel like we've got a level head that works over there, and is good to work with, and if you draw and get that, that's a problem.
Hey, but, but to me, if we put the disclaimer inside that says, that's not applied to family?
Yeah, like I say, if you look at lot splits in the Land Development Code, section forty-two, one twenty-eight, it says specifically that division of land by family member is excluded from submittal and recordation. Mr. Green, you have a question? Mr. Green?
You understand that, don't you, Dale?
But I don't say something tonight.
Oh, well, you said something tonight.
He wasn't there, he was quiet. Mr. Green?
Uh, I had, uh, yeah, I want to tell you about this density park and family park. And I was in some county, and I had some property that was managed, like, you know, all others that were wanted to. And I didn't have enough land for my father-in-law and mother-in-law to move next to me. My father-in-law liked to be able to turn around, probably everywhere I went. But when I went to do it, I couldn't get a permit. And it said the only way I could get a permit is go before the board, get permission, and, uh, come down the board, get permission, state my case, for the reason that I wanted them to be there, and what the purpose was. They couldn't be there just because of one thing, and they couldn't be there just because I had the land for them to be there, and had them going to sit there. There had to be a reason for them to need to be there. So we used the health reason, because the health was there, and we needed someone close to them to help take care of them. And that's the way they done their density park. If you want to do this, go by the route, you know, and if you end up density parking, you won't come bring it down, and you have to go before, forward, and give them a good reason. And if it wasn't good reason, they wouldn't set it, because I would have not thanked our people that. Nothing can happen. But I, I had a reason, and they accepted my reason and granted it. But they said, now, when they die, I'll pass away, and this, this land cannot be resold or redone. You got to do, move it, move, move the trailer, we put a trailer on the front, that doesn't want a trailer. And they said you're gonna have to move it, because there's no longer a, and a, so they make them give good reasons, and they, the board, you know, listens to what they're, reason for wanting it, where they want it at. And I worry that, if you got ten acres, and you're going to want a family member there, and it's one and five, or one and five, you know, that's the way they look at it. They don't, they dislike it, to a question. They would prefer a straight, but if you go before the board and give your case, and then they would either accept it or not accept it. And they didn't accept it, you know, again.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Maggie, you can...
Just, just one thing, I have a personal problem with the issue of duty to family members, because when the family members die, it's basically all war, we're all going, and they start to sell that property off, I'm back to the same problem of the county having to pave the road to get to that new house. And I just have a problem with that. So I would just suggest that if you're, if you're gonna look at these, pass what you have, kill the cap, the group, and have them go look at the, the, the rest of the rules themselves. If you choose not to do that, then I think you need to also put into place something that says, because we know this is an issue that's something we want to resolve, we're gonna retroactive it back to this date of the petition made, or whatever the date of the second, or something like that, because you have to, you have to kind of put a stake in the ground at some point, and say, this is what the law counts, we go down, and should be paid.
What's the place, the board? Have a motion by Commissioner Page.
We're gonna have another hearing.
Way to go, Clay. Gary doesn't keep me on task quite as well as anybody does. He'd have popped, shoot, it popped me by now, so. Anything else? Sure, go ahead. Now, you don't want your dad to die or anything, or something like that?
No, no, I want him out with me.
Just say he heads up, he's in the back of the room, so he'll hear it firsthand, so.
I want him out.
We've already texted him, so don't worry. Sorry about that, Keith, go ahead.
I've, I've got one question, and then maybe just a brief suggestion. The twenty-four parcels that's referred to in there, is that new parcels, or if we got a road with twenty-two parcels on it, if we create two more parcels, does that kick us into the?
Well, like I say, the twenty-four parcels is not my creation.
I, I know.
The way I would look at it, is if you've got two or three independent parcels now, I would consider them independent.
So it'd be creating twenty-four new parcels on, on a road. But I think the intent of all this can be worked. They create fifteen to forty acres, I'm not sure how that really solves the problem. I think you can leave it at fifteen acres and create a workable road standard. We've got four standards out there now, I think the fourth, the graded road standard, maybe. You've got, okay, paye, lime rock, graded, so three standards. The graded road standard looks good for building a new graded road. It can't be applied on any existing roads, you know, or most existing roads in the county. And I think you need to revisit that and maybe create a fourth that is a standard that you can apply to an existing road, bring it up to, into a passable standard. But I think you can, if you can work on that exist, a standard for the existing roads, keep it at fifteen acres with a workable road standard, you know, any new development, the water management district's going to get involved, and through the ERP process, they'll all have some rules that can be more restrictive than anything, that, anything I think y'all will be able to implement. But, you know, I'd just like for you to revisit these rules. And maybe there was a public workshop, or wasn't, was able to attend it, but I think you need some more, some more input, and maybe follow the, follow the lead of your planning commission. They voted to at least look at that road standard and voted not to, not to adopt these other amendments, and I'd like for you to look at what they've done and follow that. Thank you.
Don, are you raising your hand or stretching?
I'm stretching, but I do have an opinion on both.
No problem. I didn't tell if you were trying to get my attention, just said you were stretching or what. Anything further? I'd like to twenty the board to hold.
Now, yeah, I didn't make that motion a while ago, I was just totally, but I reckon I read out on point four. And it says, board considers said the second public hearing on Tuesday regarding the passage of proposed ordinance. But, so, I reckon if the consensus of the board, this will move on to the second hearing.
Well, you could kill it tonight.
Yes, you could kill it tonight, but if you're gonna go, since you did kill it, then it goes off to the second. Second public hearing where votes can be expressed, their opinion, you know, votes are sent, all, all considered.
I'd like to twenty the board to hold the first, first of two public hearings, set for this date, six twenty-five P M, concerning the amendment to L D C O six dash two regarding the flaglock design and road frontage, and to consider the first reading of the proposed ordinance adopting said amendment. Motion to read by Tyler Longley?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Page, second by Mr. Brown. I'll never say aye. I'll... Conrad, go for it.
The court has a paper county Florida admitting that Terry County added up, is amended adding a new section forty-two, seven, twenty, time lot standards and restrictions by adding a requirement that lots less than ten acres shall not have a width greater than three times the width. That lots less than ten acres in size above a private or public road and has road frontage equal to the required lot permissions in the zone district in which they're located and defines a flaglock as being ten acres or greater in size with a minimum of sixty feet width accessing a street, providing severability, we're talking, giving all ordinance, conflict and defiance effects of date.
Anyone in the public wish to speak on this?
Just ask that you remember what we're hoping to do, or resolve the same issue.
Anyone else?
What was the line law in eight and four?
The, and, and I was, this was on my language here, I'll, 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 I'll... The reason that, but it did come for a board member. before, before they had brought it before. The ten acres is presently in the comprehensive plan as being the threshold at which you no longer have to follow the three to one ratio for lot design. Up to that size, the length of the lot can exceed three times the width. And that's why ten acres was utilized, it's presently in the code, a workable number, that's the only reason.
And if I could say more comment, a lot of my problem is this, is that the, of the family, uh, willing to give everything that they want, you know, that has, you may need a flaglock, or that would not be the family intention from the.
Anyone else? Number twenty-one, the board to hold the first public hearing set for this date, six thirty P.M., or shortly thereafter, concerning amendment LDC oh-six dash three, regulating off-site signs, size, and location, and to consider the first reading on the proposed ordinance adopting said amendment. I'll hand a motion read by Title Longley.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Patterson, all papers say aye. All opposed, same sign, Conrad?
An ordinance of Taylor County Florida amending the Taylor County land development code as amended, amended section forty-two dash four sixty-one, title definition, by adding a definition of size, pre-standard, and size, called by amendment section forty-two, four sixty-six, prohibited signs by the, the prohibition of round and pole signs, and the prohibition of pole signs, any six and high and two hundred square feet in size, amended section forty-two dash four sixty-eight, off-site signs by adding the requirement that off-site signs cannot exceed thirty-two square feet and are limited to one sign per parcel or lot, amended section forty-two dash four sixty-five, prevent exemptions by adding the language, adding language that allows small pools on non-mowed county rideways to increase size and make relevance to the adjoining property, providing severability with medium and all ordinance and conflict and providing an effective date.
Anyone from the community wish to speak to this one? Diane?
I can hardly understand that, but it could have anything to do with big ugly billboards.
Yeah.
So, does it allow big ugly billboards so that we can look more like South Florida here? That seems to be what people want to do, is be more like, you know, lose our rural heritage and look more like places people are escaping from.
Actually, if I understand correctly, and I could be wrong, it's more restrictive, correct, Conrad?
More like a great overall view of the changes, please.
Please, yeah.
And these are wholly my fault.
For the record, Danny said it was fully his fault, so.
We both believe that.
The, uh, a part of this was just correction of the code where there were conflicting sections, and portions were moved to the definition section where they belong. The main changes are that off-site, off-site signs are going to be limited to thirty-two square feet in size and limited to one sign per parcel or lot, which makes them much less intrusive, and you can't have a dozen of them scattered along one piece of property. The other change was actually, um, spoken to and addressed by the board at earlier time, and they expressed their desire to allow portable signs, such as realtor signs, that have relevance to the adjoining property. So, that was included in this, so we could do it all at one time. Those are the only, uh, real changes that there are. There, no, there was no, I think.
So, let me ask you a question, Danny. What this does is eliminate the large, windy, handsome, in billboard signs, there'll be no more.
Off-site.
Off-site.
Explain off-site, off-site.
Well, on-site would be on the same property that the business is located.
Well, I have a billboard sign up nineteen north, I think it says.
Okay, now, let me, let me address that.
Thanks, Ray.
Yeah, now, decode presently and will still exempt signs that require a state or federal permit.
Oh, okay.
So, this, this is on county roads, essentially.
Beach road, bucky road.
Right, right.
This is, this is county roads, basically, this is referred to getting into the beaches area.
Do you have to answer?
Beach area.
Can I explain it to you better, Diane?
Let's, guess what you want?
I, I do need to end, I should have come to your workshop, I hope you have more. I think citizens probably need to be educated as we all do about codes and that.
In essence, it's making it more restrictive, so you won't see more of these public and county roads. Now, state roads, we don't patrol, so. Okay?
End of hearing.
Yep. Um, anyone else? Before we get to the next one, because these are getting lengthy, does the board want to break, or?
Just keep going.
All right. Number twenty-two, board to hold the first public hearing, set for this date, six thirty-five P.M., concerning amendment LDC oh-six oh-four, the number of lot threshold for paving roads, and to consider the first amendment reading of the proposed ordinance. Motion to read by Title.
If y'all would indulge me, this item was tabled by the planning board. I don't know that it would be proper for the board to hear, I doubt that it would be. Uh, there was no, there was not a vote recommending to deny, it was tabled, therefore, there was no recommendation. They based it primarily on the fact that the graded road standard was not available to the public for a minimum of ten days prior to the hearing before the planning board.
Second.
Have a motion to table, second by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Patterson?
And I was unsure what to do, that's why I'm standing here, see. Right, and just re-advertise it, and, right.
Clay has a question, you can ask your question.
That's, that's, so we just table it, we'll start over.
Do you need a motion to table, or just let it go? Sorry about that.
I think the consensus of the board that there was a problem with the advertising.
Ms. Pat, Jack, you move your motions, motions to draw?
Now, there was a problem with advertising, the problem was, was that they did not have the drawing ten days prior, they only had two days.
The planning board attorney's advice to the planning board was that the public should have been able to view this graded road standard ten days prior to the meeting. And based on that primarily, now, they may have had other reasons, but, uh, they chose to table it in lieu of recommending to deny it.
Do we have to advertise again?
It, it has to be totally done over again.
The ten days, do we have to advertise the ten days that it's available for review now?
Well, if it's a part of the packet, then it's available to review, that's not a problem. The board also understands that this, uh, proposed amendment is fairly intertwined with oh-six dash one, and, and that the impacts are related.
But the, the reason for this, Conrad, it wasn't that we don't advertise, but the reason for this was, we're going to take away a fifteen acre exemption, this is in rules about, we really want lime rock, we want to go to our lime rock stands. The whole purpose of this is to kind of help out the developer on the fifteen acres, in other words, to give them something that's more powerful, which is a graded road standard, which holds up quite well to the county.
But this is an application.
Of, of the other amendment.
Okay. Number twenty-three, the board to hold the first of two public hearings set for this date, six forty P.M., concerning amendment LDC oh-six dash five, allowing power slash rail lane, rail lines outside of the industrial land use category, and to consider the first reading on the proposed ordinance adopting said amendment. Motion to read by Title?
Motion.
Read by Title.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Commissioner Page, all papers say aye. All opposed, same sign, Conrad?
The Taylor County Florida amending the Taylor County land development code as amended, amendment section forty-two dash four oh eight, subsection nine C, forty-two, four oh eight, subsection eleven, one, and forty-two, four oh eight, twelve, by use groups, by amending the definition of public service utility by adding railroad rideways that are leading distribution lines serving sixty-nine KB or less, and the leading right of way and tracks from the definition of small scale industrial and the leading electricity substations and distribution lines greater than sixty-nine KB from the definition of industrial providing several millimeters, they're killing all or, and so they're covered and providing an effective date.
Oh, I'm sorry, anybody want to speak to this, I forgot, I forgot about. Diane?
I have another question, uh, just two questions. First, does this make it easier for the proposed coal plant to do business in Taylor County?
Danny, well, I would assume as much. I would, I would answer that question, yes. Well, I think it would keep the board from having to change sixty-nine KB or greater power line, right of ways, the little track, right of ways, we'd have to add an industrial, make it dumpy. And so, and from paperwork's end, it probably makes it easier. But you don't want, you don't want that deemed industrial, so why don't you deem it industrial? And what you're going to do is anywhere on that track, if somebody wants to come in for the LDRs, since it's two, you can put an industrial site there. In other words, it'd make it easier for them to get an industrial site there, you don't want to make that whole area industrial site.
I heard that, that the planning consulting commission, and I also heard that these industrial, the argument put forward in the amendment language was that you wanted to avoid having slivers of industrial property on someone's agricultural or, or residential, et cetera. And so, a sliver might be however wide you need and no more. It's hard to imagine much industry on a sliver. So, that would be my question there, to the liberty of that, but I, I hear what you're saying.
Here's an example, it was zoned industrial, and they went through, run a mud bogging track down that right of way, they did that. They said, run right through your neighborhood, and it's zoned industrial, and they got, moved up the mud bog that they ran right through your neighborhood.
I appreciate that, however, I've heard much discussion here about allowing things, and so I would wonder if that would be a realistic, although somewhat produce, fear-producing, I would question your example as being valid one. But I understand what you're saying, and I feel that we have a, a habit of, you know, of such responses. Uh, my second question had to do with the ease of the paper shuffle. Now, I hear you saying now, that it would be easier for the commission not to have to come here that.
That's my feeling. You got Colin, uh, Taylor Energy Center folks here, they can speak to where it'd be easier for them. I, I think it'd be easier if we do it the way we. Adopt facilities.
Good evening, I'm, my name is Carolyn Rappel. I'm an attorney from Tallahassee, representing the participants in the Taylor Energy Center. And I've been following this amendment to the, uh, land development regulations because we will require a rail spur and some, uh, transmission lines associated with the Taylor Energy Center. And so, this is of interest to us. Uh, first, I would say from a policy perspective, you do not want slivers or ribbons of industrial zoning throughout the county wherever you have rail lines or transmission lines. And in fact, it's my understanding that your existing rail lines and transmission lines, in fact, are not zoned, or, or are not in industrial, uh, districts. Uh, and in fact, uh, I'm advised by Mr. Greiner and others that they don't recall why this provision, or when this provision got into the LDRs, and that doesn't seem to make sense. And it doesn't, for exactly the reason that Commissioner Bethay mentioned. If you have these ribbons of industrial, uh, districts running through your county, then any property owner along that ribbon of industrial district can make the argument that they should be rezoned industrial because they are now consistent with the adjacent land use, which is this industrial ribbon. So, it, it opens you up for some mischief, uh, in the future. Uh, but perhaps more importantly, from my perspective, legal perspective, is that this revision to your land development regulations is required to bring it into compliance with statute. Under, uh, chapter one sixty-three, uh, there are cer, there is a definition of development that can be regulated by comprehensive plans and land development regulations. Certain activities are exempted from that definition of development. Both the creation of rights of way and the construction of rail lines and power lines, among other things, are exempted from that definition of development. And that is because it wouldn't, it wouldn't benefit any of us if every local government could impose different regulations on these linear facilities that go through multiple local government jurisdictions. And that is why the Public Service Commission has been given exclusive authority to regulate the transmission power grid, for example. And the Department of Transportation has authority to regulate the rail lines. Uh, and both of those authorities, because they are condemning authorities, they have the power of eminent domain, they have oversight by the courts, they can't just go in and, and condemn, you know, place one of these linear facilities wherever they want with no oversight. The court looks at whether they have considered things like land use, environmental impacts, alternative routes, safety, planning, future planning. Uh, and so, there is oversight for these activities, but the legislature has not given that oversight to local governments for good reason. And so, again, I think the overriding legal reason to adopt this amendment is to bring your land development regulations into compliance with Florida statutes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, go to the next public hearing. If you would indulge me real quick while we're here, number twenty-four, the board considers setting up second public hearings on the Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand and six, regarding the passage of the above proposed ordinances. Motion by Commissioner Bethay, second by Commissioner Brown, all papers say aye.
Aye.
If the board will indulge me one more. Number thirty-three, Green Street paving update, can you wait to get that now, so the staff will see they can?
Sure.
Is that okay, anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Where are we at on?
We are finishing our construction, the, the plans and the layout. We have, our goal is to finish the design by October, to have an RFP ready to bring to the board for approval by mid-October, early October, mid-October, have the board approve it, and once the board has approved it, advertise it, once the advertisement is complete, we plan to have our bids received by December.
Well, for, 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 we're going through, uh, everything a lot of projects going on. When does the, the, I mean, any sort of grant?
No, we have to change it back, if I remember correctly, December two thousand and eight, is that project?
I would have to go back and look at that documentation.
That's the break.
You know, what we had was, there's no, they don't have the calls in, uh, January, then spring, and sort.
I think we were officially awarded the bid, though, after July, the fiscal year started this year for the state of Florida, if I remember correctly, but we can verify that, make sure that we're, we're in good shape. We can't lie to the public about it, Lynn, and we feel comfortable when you get it done.
We can just try to make sure we, we have that timeline up.
Got a bunch of projects that, that, that's all right.
And I can tell you that, that project is on the top of the list.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Back on track, number twelve, the board received an update on the Department of Community Affairs, DCA. Issues requested by the board on September seventh, two thousand and six. Conrad?
We, uh, Mr. Bethay and Ty and Bob, just, we had a little conference with the county for DCA. We didn't get very far with, uh, with them, but we did request that we have an audience with Valerie, I can't remember her last name.
Valerie?
I'm going to call Valerie.
Is it Corin? I, I can't remember Valerie.
That's, that's the true name.
I don't know Valerie, I can't remember her last name.
Uh, we requested an audience with Valerie because she would be the one that, that, uh, the attorney for DCA, Kelly Marks, had said that we'd be making this, a decision whether to go forward with their, their complaint. We also reviewed at that meeting some of the documents that we had, and also some of the documents that DCA had, and we were able to support our position at that meeting. Uh, we, uh, we're not able to do that.
Uh, we, uh, we're not able to do that, we're welcome to go to the hearing. I mean, that's just what it was.
We worked a decision to make, I mean, I don't know what decision we made. The decision we made, we were concerned that we had some problems.
Well, to put it right, right now, we have definitely our response. They don't, they don't.
Yeah, that's, but one of the things she said, and I, I didn't, I meant to probably pull that document from Florida, but, planning council, did, in that document, she said it's a four-lane highway off the B road. Is that not going to say that? That's what she told us on the phone.
Talk about evacuation, Bruce, they figured it was a four-lane highway, and I still don't, you and I reviewed it, what we said?
I don't remember. Diane, will you go back and check, make sure that doesn't have a four-lane highway? I'm wondering if it has two lanes coming out, more coming out, and more coming out to speak English, or something like that, I don't know. But that was, that was one of our claims, and I was, I'll tell you, I was very disappointed in that, I would say. Uh, I, I really would like to go eat lunch with this, this, turning, I'd like to get over to this side and figure out a good. She was, she, she had no negotiation.
There was nothing against it.
Well, we're going to, we're going to, you know, the board agrees, and it's going to be Conrad myself and, and, uh, off the ship, we'll come up with it. Then we'll go up and we're going to try, you know, Valerie, so, very positive, that, hey, if we can shove it in, it's a sort of different, uh, Valerie should have gone back to the same concept, it never was, uh, excuse me.
Kelly.
Kelly Marks. Kelly Marks, she's going to have the same idea, it never was there, it was four, and, uh, you know, one of the questions I have, we got into the situation, probably, DCA asked us to clarify the high gas in this area, am I correct?
It came about as part of the EAR process, and, you know, I couldn't give you a specific time or date when that first, when it.
I would like to, I, I would like us to do documentation, find out why we, my understanding, we were asked to clarify the suspension of submission, we're deciding.
I don't have any information, but I, I'm sure for that. What they're pointing to is documentation that they provided from the initial adoption of the comprehensive plan, where they recognize that four and parade group.
As I recall, the meeting we had with DCA, it was, um, it was videotaped, and, um, does anyone have any information if we did that videotape? People were there. What's your name, Diane?
I was, uh, I have a hang since the word, and, what was the question?
Who did the videotape?
Who did the videotape?
Jordan may have a videotape, you need to tell us.
We'd sure like to make a copy of it.
I'll tell her.
You can ask her about that, I'll appreciate it. Give me a call, okay?
Anyway, I, I, you know, if the board will allow us to go up and probably discuss with Valerie one more time, but, you know, I was very disappointed, yeah, I was very disappointed to drive, drive out of the gate, there's just nothing here, I don't know what, you know, why you both are talking like that here. You know, that's literally why.
I have no objection to you, Sheffield, Conrad, Mr. DCA.
I have no objection.
Who was her name again? I asked one. What's her name?
I think Kelly.
She had an answer by mine.
Conrad, what's her name, please? Kelly.
Marks.
Marks. Doc?
You told them about a second meeting, you should be. Well, it wasn't actually a meeting, all of those were meetings, we did it by cell phone, discussed the issues, and, um, Valerie was not there, and Valerie is the one that was, you know, that made the decision. Kelly Marks is not correct.
Valerie.
Valerie makes final decision. And Valerie was the only voice agreeing at the end here. At the mitigation, that everybody was there, and, uh, that, we want to talk about it, but we made some representations of how we had to say, and, and we rested staff there, you know, would not acknowledge that there was, you know, a possibility that, and they had to say. And another thing for, uh, information, as the people are here, there were different votes that were there at the meeting with DCA, as opposed to who were talking through on the phone, because Kelly Marks was not at the meeting, it was with DCA, the first meeting that, that, to the public. That's the other reason why I want, she's a baby.
You know, she wasn't in the meeting. Even as I recall, we didn't get a good explanation about why she wasn't there.
Doc?
If the board will recall, when we were asking, uh, our requests, that, that we followed up meetings, the Democratic hearing, they, we, they were coming down here. We've had ninety days, we are, and always expect the board to get there. We've got a lot of time, I've given a lot of information, and the past, and the rest of it, and research. We need to get this thing resolved, and drag on forever, and I feel that possibly we can follow the mediation to agree to it with them, and maybe in terms of also. If we go through the administration activities, this could achieve, drag on for several months. And this not only affects, you know, my personal property, but it affects other property, and those, you know, in the nation more. And so, we need to try to get this mediation, assuming we can get this thing resolved, and so. I think we have a pretty good argument, uh, this is when I discussed this in the past, I gave a lot of information, which I feel will support that on the new. I have some other points I like in that mediation. I feel that if we do, in that mediation, there are a couple of points we need to stipulate on the board, we didn't prove the stuff. And I will not be able to go through the relations at this point in time, I deserve that right away. But, uh, there's been some things that's occurred with DCA, with the planning council, that contribute, to contribute to a lot of confusion. And so, you know, mediating mediation, solve this sometimes, but, let's come up with a ministry over here, that this one, drag on for several months.
Anyone else? Before we do the break, I just made a mistake, too. Did anyone wish to speak on number thirty-three? Green Street? Hearing them, we have a five-minute recess.
I asked, I asked the full board before I did that, though.